Come to the full council meeting on Tuesday the 22nd of July. Please, could you have your phones on silent or switched off, please? In the event of an alarm, we leave the building with the fire doors here. And we congregate at the wall near the funeral parlour, please, thank you. Item number one, to note apologies for absence.
From councillors Buckston, Peg, Hobbs, Perkins, Brewer, Beth Moises and councillor Leach.
Thank you. To receive declarations of interest and consider requests for dispensations. No, thank you. To approve the minutes of the full council meeting held on the 15th of July 2025. Proposer is councillor Wiles, seconder councillor Damon, all those in favour, please. Thank you. Yep. Going to sign them now. Thank you. Item four, public forum. For one, county councillor and borough councillor, not of my here. For two, police councillor Levers doing a report.
Good evening. This report is quite long, so I'm not going to read it, all of it. But it will be on the council website. So some salient points tonight. There was a SNAP meeting and the police said this. They carried out nineteen stop searches in Downham. And they were walking around looking after, looking out for the retailers, et cetera, because of the antisocial behaviour. They have taken positive action against repeat offenders of antisocial behaviour. Four youths have been dealt with for the theft and criminal damage to a trolley adapted for use by disabled persons from Tesco. Outcomes for these four ranged from words of advice through to a deferred prosecution. Two adult males have been identified and charged in court for theft offences at Tesco's. They have done nineteen stop searches this year, this time, and nine of them resulted in drugs and outcome. They have been supporting the retailers, particularly at the footbridge in Tesco's, near Tesco's supermarket, as there has been a lot of antisocial behaviour there. The police do actually feel that the antisocial behaviour which has been a problem has decreased with all the work that they have been doing. But however, they are aware, but only from social media, and one incident has been reported, that youths are kicking and banging on doors. What they would urge the public to do is to report it on 101 or the online form. As the more people that report it, the more information they'll be able to glean. We have one important, again, the crime commissioner for Norfolk, Sarah Taylor, is coming. And she's coming to Downham Market Library on the first of August from 10:30 to 12. Everyone is welcome to speak about their concerns about crime in Down, in this area. Also, this next SNAP meeting is in October. And again, it'll be at Watlington from seven o'clock, the village hall on the 13th of October. And again, everybody is welcome to go along in the areas to speak about their concerns of crime in, in the area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Levers. Item four three. The public, anything the public wishes to bring forward? Yep. Yeah? You can have three minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you. Am I right? Just wanted to speak on the proposed development, Riston End, what would be phase two of the development they're doing at the moment, near the double one, double two. And just don't think it should be allowed to go ahead, the infrastructure in general in the town, schools, dentists, doctors. You name it, roads, the roads are terrible, trains. I mean, they're selling it at the moment like it's, you know, utopia or something, you know, excellent communication links and everything, but reality is, it isn't. You get more people and it's just going to get worse. So I just don't think that it should be a thing. I don't think it should, you know, I think it should be dead in the water. I don't think, you know, it should go ahead. That's just my opinion. Whether, I mean, I do back on to it, I live on Riston End. But I have lived somewhere else where they've had the houses built behind me when I was on railway road. So I'm not saying because it's in my backyard, I don't agree, I just don't agree with there being any more building until, if they do. More infrastructure needs to be sorted with everything. So I just wanted to say what I thought. So I think that's, that's me done, if that's all right?
That's all right, yeah. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, please? No? Okay, we're going to item five, mayor's announcements. Friday, July the 18th, I had a visit to the castle in Downham Market with the mayor of King Lynn, Andy Bullen, and our deputy clerk, Tina Griffin. All the rooms have been finished to a very high standard. The Perfleet Trust, who will be running the site, will come and give a presentation to full council in September. Tuesday, July the 22nd, this morning, the mayor, S and myself, had a visit to RAF Mildenhall for a change of command with a reception afterwards. And I'd just like to advertise the Sunday Makers Market, this Sunday, 27th of July, which will be run by Mabel's Bakery. And then I'm gonna push my charity, please make a note in your diaries. There'll be a quiz on the 22nd of August, Friday, in the town hall for this year's mayor's charity, Downham PAX and the Boys Brigade. Seven, for a 7.30 start, five pound each, teams of four, and there will be a raffle. And bring your own refreshments as usual. Friday, the 29th of August, 12 till 2.30, there will be a children's disco. Please note, all children must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. There will be no qualified childcare staff at this event. Thank you very much. Item six. Governance and finance committee recommendations to be agreed. Six one. To sign the right to play pledge requested by the youth advisory board. Adopt a policy incorporating the associated recommendations into planning responses and update the grant application process accordingly. Any discussion on that, or do we go straight to a vote? Councillor Damon?
It would be Downham Market Grant Application Process.
The right to play pledge is not really to do with equipment at the moment.
Yeah, it's just signing the pledge that we recognise the importance of play. That, that's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. If you remember, the young people came and did as a demonstration talk. That it's a national thing, that there is a right to play for children and young people. Councillor Levers? Councillor Levers?
I agree with what councillor Damon said, but I think what we'd like is just to know what, how the grant application will be updated. That's what I think councillor Damon's on about. How?
I haven't looked at it in detail, I must admit. I was gonna wait for the vote and then change it, if we needed changing. I can quite, I'm happily circulate it and, and let you know by email, if you like, what the changes might be.
Could we just vote on the pledge and then we'll know exactly?
Right. So we're gonna vote on signing the right to play pledge then, I'll propose that. Councillor Le, councillor Levers seconded. All those in favour, please? Thank you. Six two. To approve a ten-year extension to the existing Howdell PAX lease on the same terms and conditions as currently in place. There's not a lot really to explain about that, there are no, a nominal lease at the moment. And we just want to extend that for another 10 years as it's coming up. Councillor Levers?
I saw the lease is dated 2017, is that correct? 10-year lease, so it's not, am I correct? So it shouldn't be?
I think you're correct, else it won't be coming up.
Well, this is what I couldn't understand, it's 2017 on the lease.
Councillor Damon? I take it it'll still be a repair lease as it is in existence? Exactly the same as it is now, yep. Okay. Yeah, all it is, is a 10-year extension on what it is at the moment, you know. Okay. So I'll propose that, if I've got a second, please. Councillor Damon, all those in favour, please? Thank you. Yep. Six three. To establish a working party comprising three members of the property committee, three members of the governance and finance committee to determine the grounds maintenance tender format in preparation for the contract expiry in October 2026, to agree terms of reference. This is another long one, it's coming up next year, but we thought we'd put three of each committee in place, ready to start negotiations. Councillor Jordan?
Yeah, I'll sit on it if you want.
Councillor Pope?
Right, why wasn't this working party put together for the gritting contract? It seems strange that you've decided to do a working party for an easy one, yet you haven't done it for the working party for a gritting contract. I don't understand why that-
Gritting contract went out to tender, we got three quotes.
Yeah, but you should still, if you're gonna do it for one, you should have done it for the others as well.
Maintenance contract, from what I gather, is quite a lengthy contract, quite detailed.
Well, so should the gritting contract be, because I'm concerned about where it's gone.
But surely, Mr Mayor, this'll go out to tender as well, won't it? Same as what the other one did, so, quite agree with what councillor Pope is saying there.
Councillor Julie Pope?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with the gritting contract. That's also a three-year contract, the same as the maintenance contract, and a similar cost. So I can't understand why both the contracts haven't been treated equally.
I can't comment on that, it was done before the clerk went on leave. I'll ask her about it when she comes back.
Councillor Damon?
I believe that the two contracts, three-year terms, are not running parallel, but they are in different sequence.
No, the maintenance one runs out next year.
And the gritting contract?
Gritting one is this year.
Thank you, that's what I've just said.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment? Right, so basically, we're looking for names from the two committees, if they want to go on this maintenance tender to look up. Oh, hello.
Yeah, I thought I'd finished for this year, forgot I had it.
Please come and take a seat, thank you. Councillor Damon?
Does this have to be proposed, this recommendation?
Oh, we're looking for names, aren't we?
This was just to get a working party together for the grounds maintenance contract. And take your point about the gritting one, I'll obviously have to do a bit more investigation because I wasn't involved in it. But for, for tonight, if you're happy to go ahead and establish a working party, then it would be great if people wanted to put themselves forward. If you don't want to go down that route just yet, we'll wait until next meeting, yeah.
Councillor Julie Pope?
I believe, on a quick count up, I think there's only yourself who's here who's part of the governance committee.
So?
Councillor Moyes, that little finger, it's very hard to spot.
I'll put it up higher for you. I think with the least amount of councils I've seen for some time, I propose that we postpone this and bring it back with another meeting of more councils here, so that they could put themselves forward if they wish.
Okay, that's fine, it's, we've got plenty of time, so we can do that.
Shall we have a vote for that?
So we'll have a vote to bring that back and postpone it to a later date, I plead. I will propose that, do we have a second?
I think councillor Moises has just proposed that.
Yeah, I'll second that then. So all those in favour of postponing to a further date? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lovely. Six four, to renew the amended GDPR data protection policy for three years.
Yeah, you'll remember that this was at last week's meeting, there was one bit in there that said personnel committee, I've changed it to HR and circulated it again. It's for you to vote on adopting or not.
I'll propose, if you've got a second for that, a second, I can't remember the name, Sim, councillor Sims, yeah. Yeah, all those in favour, then, please, thank you.
Yep, oh, thank you.
Item seven, to discuss and agree council response to applications received from the borough council. I'd like to hand over to councillor Damon, if he would like to take control.
Good evening, everybody. First item on the agenda, to discuss and agree council response to applications received from the borough council. First one is 712500961 OM. Outline planning application with all matters reserved apart from access for-
Councillor Damon, could you speak up a little bit, please? I'll put the mic nearer.
Oh, sorry if you can't hear me.
Right, that's it, I'll spit in it. 260 dwellings, associated facilities and infrastructure. Car parking, open space provision and access to land at E561665 and north 302569. Nightingale Lane, Downham Market, Norfolk. Now, as far as I can make out from this drawing, this does not form part of the Downham Market planning, future planning projects, this area. As far as I can remember, when this area was first muted for planning, this area was agreed to be a green space area with ponds in it, drainage ponds. And was an area for general public access. So as far as I can see, we cannot give consent to something that doesn't fall in with the planning for West Norfolk, I'm sorry. That's my view.
Shall I just clarify?
I asked the Tina, the deputy clerk, to clarify the situation, please.
So the local plan that's just been agreed for the, for West Norfolk, included phase one as an allocated piece of land for development. Phase two area is not allocated in the local plan. That means we're not just commenting on the design of what they're putting forward, it's, it's the actual basis of, should it be developed at all? So you can include that in the discussion. The local plan does get changed during its lifetime and it, it spans till, I think it was 2040. So that whilst it's, this piece of land is not in the local plan at the moment, highly likely it will be, particularly if the government pushes forward on the housing allocations, they're gonna have to find land somewhere and you can imagine that it might be that piece of land. But it's for you to discuss and decide what we, we want to reply.
Councillor Campbell, Rob?
With Nightingale Lane, one of the concerns is the, the existing path to and from Denver, there's the unadopted highway slash path area. They do not appear to have used dropped curves, curbs, you know, the actual curbs on the stone. The phase one, which has already been built, would be good if those could get converted. What they seem to have done instead is dumped a whole load of concrete there to almost make what basically isn't really a ramp pit, might as well not be one.
Talking about phase two, not phase-
Yeah, yeah, but both, it's both phases that I have these concerns about, really, not one. It's not only phase one, it's not only phase two, it's just make sure they use dropped curbs, it's just a thing.
Councillor Pope?
Yes, I, I went down there the other day to meet the residents there by chance, they actually turned up. And their concerns was the dust that's been created on phase one, which is also gonna create phase two. Also, there's been no safety area for them or the children in that, in them properties. And so I would like to see a good safety issue raised before it's allocated to them. And I think this, we should not accept this as it is at the moment, and I wouldn't vote for it if it was.
And I'm particularly concerned with the areas of water that are there with young families around there as well. Even if it's fenced, children will plant fences. Councillor Pope?
Can I speak again?
Yep.
Right, I asked, one of the reasons why the residents were worried is because on phase one, where councillor Rob, councillor Campbell Rob said, there was a roadway go through the middle of the cycleway. And if you know cyclists, they don't stop, they just keep going. Well, the cars were kept going, we had, we had heavy vehicles going through at the same time. And I can see this happening on phase two if they put a roadway in on the path there, where the cyclists come from the left and the right. And so it's just not safe to, to vote for it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it, I would say we, we sit and wait.
Councillor Sims?
Notwithstanding everything that's been said before, and this town is growing. The thing that bothers me is that they're putting in that number of houses on that site, which is, seems to be inappropriate at the moment. But there's no additional infrastructure to support the new occupants, there's no schools, no new doctor surgery extensions, nothing. The shopping area will be, become overloaded, as will the roads in the town. I will not be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councillor Damon?
As far as I'm concerned, there is nothing that brings to my mind that we should promote this planning application. There's no mention in the planning application of sewage treatment, there's no mention of surface water, there's no mention of schools, there's no mention of medical facilities. In fact, there's no mention of anything that is within need to the public living in these properties. The other thing, of course, is there's 260 houses, but it's not. It's 3,400 people, could be. Or even more, if some of those houses are specially designed as serviceable houses for large families. Okay, so as far as I can see, there's nothing, I can see, that recommends it for us to approve it in any shape or form. Thank you.
Any other comment? Councillor Wild.
Yeah, I'd like to propose we turn it down on the comments made around the stable tonight.
Second to? Councillor Sims, all those in favour of that? Thank you.
Just looking at the material planning considerations, which as you know, we need to hang our refusal on. I would suggest we'd, the very first one on this sheet, which is the local strategic national planning policies, it's not in the local plan, so we'll do that one. Anything else anybody can pick out on? Yeah. Yeah.
Highway issues, traffic generation, noise, vehicle access and highway safety?
Yeah.
Well, it's clear they've had, don't mind me saying, not much regard to highway safety.
Councillor Wild is in talks at the moment with the proposed new roundabout as well.
And noise and disturbance?
That'll make it worse.
Can we go for noise and disturbance as well?
We can do, but generally, construction, the construction period isn't a reason to turn something down.
There's smells and fumes and things like that in there as well.
But that won't come from, once it's built, that's just in construction phase and that's generally not considered a material planning consideration. Sorry?
Children's safety. No, that's not a planning thing, is it?
Yeah. Okay, I'll throw it in then.
Capacity of physical, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've got you.
Councillor Lewis.
Deficiency in social facilities, example spaces in schools.
Any others? Councillor Jordan, any others? Your sphere?
No.
No, I think you said it all, I think.
Yeah, okay, just wondering.
Thank you, that's fine.
The last item, inadequate, inappropriate landscaping or means of enclosure, particularly for the ponds areas. Okay? In relation to this, I'm going to ask a question at councillors' question time, if I may.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Right.
Next one, yeah?
Okay, we go on to application 2500914, full application, which is single storey glass roof located to the rear of the property at 25 Park Lane, Downham Market Norfolk. Now, this is an unenclosed roof, it's more like a large glass umbrella, I'll put it that way. And that's the simplest way I can explain what it is.
I've seen him advertised on the telly, yeah.
Okay, so that's what it is. I personally have got no thoughts for or against. Is that a proposal?
My proposal is that we accept it.
Anybody else wishes to speak before we do that one? Yes. Sorry, yes, there was? Yep, so we've got proposal on the second to?
Yeah.
All those in favour of them, please? Thank you.
And that's acceptance of, yeah?
Yep.
Next one, councillor Damon.
All right, we'll go on to the next one, which is 2501098, full council plan, okay? Retrospective planning for the approved garage. The carriage, garage has been built smaller than the approved garage and the gable end roof has been put on the front and rear of the garage rather than the two sides. A single large garage door has been installed at 39 Beckswell Road, Downham Market Norfolk. Now, my attitude to this is we should make them take it down and rebuild it to size. But that's not a very fair way of looking at it. But I think they should be sent by the Borough Planning Committee that this is not within the planning approved plans. So therefore, they should be reminded of that and that we as a concession will allow it to stay as they wish it to be. And that is a proposal.
Yeah, they've put, they've made them put in a separate application for this, so they're, they are jumping through the hoops.
Right, okay.
Councillor Wild.
Yeah, I'll second that again.
Right, all those in favour of them, please?
Sorry, I didn't get who proposed what.
Councillor Damon proposed, councillor Wild's seconded.
Yeah, to, to accept?
Yes.
Could you just confirm what the proposal is for, please?
The proposal is to accept it. Yes.
But they've got to put in a separate application form for it.
Yeah, they already have.
Yeah.
To accept, yes, all in favour? Yeah, everybody, thank you.
And the next one?
This one's 2501160, full application, direction of a single storey side extension at the beaches, 55 London Road, Downham Market Norfolk. I can't see any problems with this application. To my knowledge, it complies with the necessary planning applications as required. It doesn't overfill the site with property, so I think it's, my own personal, is that we approve it.
You proposed, yeah?
I proposed we approve it.
Seconded by councillor Levers, all those in favour, please, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much, councillor Damon.
Thank you for your considerations and efforts.
Item eight, to consider the following matters of community engagement and greed actions. Eight one, Twinning Club, their 50th anniversary of the signing of the charter, would you like to?
Yeah. So the Twinning Club wishes to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the signing of the charter next year, despite there not being an awful lot of support from Civray for their, their side of the Twinning Club. And what's going to happen is that the Twinning Club is going to invite whoever's interested over here to celebrate the 50th anniversary. As part of that, they'd like a civic occasion on the Monday morning, which will just be a coffee tea, meet the councillors, exchange a gift, if that's appropriate. But also to hold a dinner, which the Twinning Club will organise. What they're asking for is use of the hall and inviting all the councillors and the mayor and deputy to attend.
Councillor Levers.
I realise that they are civic, but they have free hall here every month, they, the members have to pay seven pound a month, so that since 1970s, they've had a free hall. I think we should ask for a contribution as energy prices have gone sky high for here and so are the labour costs.
Just had a postscript, this will be probably their last item on the agenda, basically, for the Twinning Club. Councillor Julie Poet. You swiped?
Yeah, I'm just going back to the information we were given by email. They don't seem to have any definite plans yet, so if they're asking for grant money to support, no?
No, no, they're asking for free use of the hall, basically.
They are winding down, basically.
Okay, thank you. They will fund and organise the dinner and then will put on a very small civic occasion on the Monday morning, if of course it gets supported by the people on the other side of the channel. If, if there isn't anybody coming, there won't be the celebration.
Councillor Wild.
Is that one day or two days they want the hall?
Just, just for the dinner, one dinner, yeah.
Councillor Damon.
May I remind you that in the community orchard is a tulip tree dedicated and provided by the Twinning Club.
And it's grown?
So there is, and it's grown and there is a permanent record of the Twinning Club. And this 50th anniversary is a good thing, but it appears to be a bit of a sad thing as well.
Councillor Levers.
I think we need more information, I think we need to wait until the Civray people, apparently according to one of the emails, it looks like only the mayor and the deputy mayor are interested. We have no hours, we don't know how long they want that day. We turned down somebody recently and they could have a free hall, so I think we've got to be very careful, I know it's civic again, but...
Okay, we need a vote.
Any other comment? Councillor Sims.
Is there any way we can get any idea of the support from our twin before we commit?
Yeah, yeah, we can, I can go back with that, that as a response, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So do you want to defer this then until I've got a bit more information?
Do you want to vote on that? Yeah, so we'll vote to postpone that to another occasion. Who wants to put forward for that? Yeah, councillor Levers, second to, councillor Wilds, all those in favour of them, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask also, that goes on another agenda item, so we don't miss out in case they want to take it forward?
Yeah.
In the case of postponing it, we really need to postpone it until the other people, the twinning, the other town that has actually has had a chance to vote on it as well. That's what we're waiting for, isn't it, really?
Yeah, the, the exchange, I understand, won't be till April next year, so there is plenty of time, but, so yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it's, it comes up on an agenda. I'm sure the Twinning Club will put it on, ask us to put it on another agenda anyway, but yeah, that's fine.
Item two, to consider requests for grant funding from Melody Allsort Down.
Yes, you've all had the application, any comments?
Councillor Pye.
We already contribute to them by giving them a discount in the hall and that is part of our policy that we don't give, if we give discounts, we don't give grants and that's in our policy. I can't remember the name of it, no doubt my wife will tell me.
I will say that this is like a one off, I use the same sort of sound equipment for the horticulture and the batteries I use, there's two A, double As in them, and they only last for about an hour for the speaker to speak. So if she's using them for production, I can well understand she's throwing away loads of double A batteries.
But you are correct, we can't give, where we give in one area, we can't give in both.
Yep.
That's right, and nine hundred pound for batteries is quite an expensive hobby.
They're rechargeable ones, I suppose. Yeah. Councillor Levers.
It's a shame we can't support them because Mr Mayor will tell us that the production he went to recently was very, very good.
It was very good, they're getting new actors in now, yeah. It is a one off request, really, I could say, but fair enough, that's a council fee.
Can we go against it, Tina, Deputy Clark, or not?
I guess you can vote to go against your own policy. On this one occasion, you could do that, but I would question why we have a policy in the first place if we were going to do that.
Councillor Rob.
Let's vote to go against our own policy or amend the policy to allow us to have a clause that says exceptional circumstances as voted on at full council. Basically, the policy does not apply where exceptional circumstances apply, which sounds like a great way to not have a, which sounds like a great way to not have a policy, no?
Councillor Wild.
We've got to think and remember this is public money we're spending, it's not ours just to use how we like and if you've got a policy, I suppose we need to stick by it.
Councillor Pye, it's your second time you've talked, but yeah, go on.
Well, if you don't let me, I'll shut up.
No, go on.
Yeah, I still think that we should turn this down because as councillor Wild says, public money and also we've got a policy, we've been, the governance has sat there and written the policies out, we should accept the policies as they are and turn this down.
Is that your proposal?
There's a proposal on table, councillor Campbell Robbs, do we have a second to for that?
Councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis, all those in favour for that vote?
Is that all? Are you abstaining?
And all those against?
So it's one abstention, yeah.
All those against.
And one against.
Okay, thank you for that. Number nine.
Could I just clarify if I'm allowed to abstain or not? I thought last meeting you weren't allowed to abstain.
You can abstain, I just won't record it.
Right.
I only, I only record the in favours and the againsts.
So you're basically, you're against if you abstain?
You're just not counted in the, in the vote at all?
You're not here.
Right, you're not here, okay.
Right, number nine, to receive an update on external HR consultancy, research and appoint members to HR committee in addition to councillor Peg and Jordan.
Do you want me to just say a few words? We didn't vote in the additional people, we've since had words, I've circulated supporting statements from councillor Pye and councillor Damon, who both wish to go on the HR committee. So we need to vote whether you want that to happen. And I was also going to update you, although I have circulated it by email, on what I found out about the HR consultancy. So do you want to do the vote?
Yep, so we have to vote separate, please? So if I could have a proposal on a second to for councillor Pye? Proposal is councillor Wilds, second to councillor Jordan, all those in favour of councillor Pye, please?
Is that everybody?
I'm looking at you. Thank you. And again, proposal on second to for councillor Damon, proposal councillor Wilds, second to councillor Moyes, all those in favour, please?
Yeah, everyone, thank you.
Lovely, thank you.
Yeah. So in addition to the information that I sent round about the HR consultancy that I had a phone discussion with, who was recommended by Norfolk Parish Training Services, I've also tried, I've rung round a few of the other town councils just to see what they do. Swaffham already use that consultancy, Ailsham also use them, Fakenham don't use anybody. The people that do use them, oh, I'm still waiting to hear back from Thetford, I did ring them, but I haven't had a reply from them. The people that do use them are extremely happy with it. The people that do use them are extremely happy with them. That's as far as I know.
councillor Jordan?
councillor Peg has asked me to just bring this up. Yeah. Basically, what it is, is he's spoken to a consultant and done some research himself on a company called Mustard HR. He spoke to the lady who owned, who runs it. And she's, she can help us, she's willing to work with the town council. And it can be on an ad hoc basis where we don't have to sign up to any contracts. So it's a pay per case. And obviously, the way I see it is, well, I don't think we need to be paying for lots of money out when hopefully we won't have to keep using consultants because we don't want to have to keep investigating stuff. And apparently, according to what she said, is that she has worked for quite a few councils before, so...
Have you got a contact for them?
She's, yeah, there is a contact, and she's going to send all the paperwork over of her company. But obviously, that's not available at the moment. But it will be tomorrow, whenever. But, but there is a number, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If you let me have that, I'll give them a ring and chat through.
Can I just say that I have worked with Mustard in the past for businesses?
Right.
councillor Leavis.
I'd just like to put this over to everyone. The contract we've got at the moment with Crona costs us £2,842.32 a year. We pay about £263 a year, a month. But it expires on the 25th of February next year. We also have another contract, but that's purely just for the clerk. The Crona has dealt with a lot of problems, and obviously, that's why we need a company that has nothing to do with Down and doesn't know what's happened in the past or anything. So I'm thinking that 18, am I allowed to say the amount? The amount we pay, I think it's a problem we could pay. The Crona contract, I wouldn't agree with five years because the Crona contract was signed by the previous council for five years. Three years is what we've been offered lower, and that's at 1,800 a year. Unfortunately, it would tie over with Crona, but once we get rid of Crona, we'd be looking for a new HR company anyway, next year, February.
councillor Jordan?
I'd just like to add to that. I think until we get the full information from this company, that I don't think we need to actually make a vote this evening. I think some more information is required, and then can actually come back to the actual... The actual...
Yeah, the actual agenda item says update you on it, not necessarily to make a decision tonight.
Well, it does, yeah, it does say that, so it can be brought back.
Just needed votes on the committee members as well. councillor Moyes.
Is there any recommendations or reviews on this company? What can be put forward? Yeah, just to make sure they are Mustard, yeah? Okay, brilliant, thank you.
councillor Wiles.
Yeah, I think if you've got a contract with somebody, you know just how much you're spending. The only concern I have with ad hoc is, do they know how deep your pockets are when they hit you for one occasion?
Yep.
Yeah, the, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. That's the way I'm thinking, you know. Yes, we'll go ad hoc, but my god, we're going to fleece you when you do.
Yeah.
The quote that we were given was unlimited calls, unlimited times, we can go back and forwards to them.
Yeah.
For that amount.
If you read the email, they've got creditations as long as your arm, everybody locked them.
But yeah, I'll contact Mustard and get them to send some stuff over for us to compare. Yeah, definite, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Anything else, anybody else? No? Right. Item 10, to consider draft sketch from Darren French, architect for Jubilee Community Centre upgrade, previously circulated. This is to consider, there will be no voting.
Yeah, it's just to gather people's initial thoughts on this. It will come back time and time again, no doubt. But if anybody's got any comments they wish to make now, please do.
councillor Lewis.
Yeah, I think we need a meeting with the architect again to sort of go over several bits of his, this sketch, and what have you. Because I think there's quite a need for rejigging things, from what I've seen of it. Okay, so if we can arrange, if we can arrange a meeting with him.
There will be rejigging all the way through, I think.
Yeah, there probably will be, but I think we need a meeting with him to sit down, pen, paper, and tell him, sort of, yeah, basically, basically what we want. Because I was very disappointed at not being at that meeting that morning with him, to have put the views across when myself, councillor Jordan, councillor Pyatt had started this project off. And we wasn't in attendance that day, so, yeah, we probably could have had a, as near to probably what we were looking for or could be looking for now. But we're going to have to have a meeting with him and sit down, get his pen and paper out again.
We've talked about this, but it's very difficult for 20 people to have an input onto something. So can I suggest a smaller group that are particularly interested in this initial stage of the project? If you'd like to put yourselves forward, we can organise a meeting.
councillor Poyet.
We have no business plan for the JCC site. No costings have been done. And with these draft plans in front of us, I must flag up some of the concerns. The drawing certain people have met the architect with no direction from the council that I know of, and with no knowledge of what the council require. The architect was engaged, but I don't know how he was chosen and if anyone else was concerned. The past property chair had produced a draft sketch, but I don't know if this was passed on to the architect.
Yes, it was.
Before going on further, we need to look at the very carefully because of the huge cost which involves spending public money. It is time now to stop and develop the business plan for the whole site. Recent experience has proved that costs and prices rise before work in progress is completed. At the present, I cannot support these plans without a business plan in place. And I hope we can get together and do one with a small party.
No, I think it's been said enough, yeah.
Any more discussion on that one then? councillor Wiles.
Yeah, it was a sensible remark that councillor Pyatt made. I think you need everything in place and know just where you're going. Because we might end up like HS2, mayn't we? So, you know, you need, yeah, we've got to be on a better track than that. So it all needs putting in place.
councillor Julie-Pot.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, it took me a little while to work out the plans, what was going where. And it appears that the main entrance is now turned around to the south side of the site. And I, to be frank, I think really, it's been really a waste of time, what he's done so far. It just doesn't seem sensible, the way you're going in, how the plans work. And I definitely think you need to have a good look at it and start again.
councillor Lewis.
Yeah, I would like to be one of the people sitting down with the architect so we can go through this. And could we make that an evening meeting, Tina, if possible, with him?
I don't know until I've asked him.
Yeah, yeah.
On the gentleman.
Yeah. Anybody else want to be present at that meeting? Okay, I've got councillor Lewis, councillor Sims, councillor Lane, councillor Charlie Pyatt, so far.
Is that councillor Jordan as well, or?
Yeah, so that's one, two, three, four, five. I think that's probably plenty, if I'm honest.
councillor Moyes, is your finger up for joining the committee work party, or are you wishing to say something?
Okay, I will investigate setting up a meeting. But I would say we definitely do need a business plan for the site. And it's been on, it's on the property agenda again, I think, for tomorrow night. Somehow, we need to come up with that, I think, before we probably go much further.
I think on this case, we've been putting the cart before the horse, so we now need to bring it back so the horse is running first.
Thank you councillor Pyatt for that. Anybody else need a comment, please? Thank you. Right, we've considered that, so now we're going to item 11, to consider engaging a quantity surveyor for the Jubilee Community Centre upgrade.
Yeah, there's not really a lot of point unless we've got an agreed plan to go forward. I guess we could think about agreeing it in principle, because we will need someone to cost it up, whatever the plan turns out to be. And that is going to cost us in the region of about £500 in order to get a fairly quick, no, not quick, less detailed, should I say. They won't go into every nut and bolt, they'll go on broad costs, just to give us an idea, yeah.
councillor Damon.
In the eventuality of employing a quantity surveyor, may I suggest that we employ a clock of works to make sure that the plans and specifications are adhered to and there are no changes to those without prior agreement. And I think that should be part and partial of this development of the Jubilee Centre.
Yeah, I think there's a definite need for a project manager of some description. Certainly, we haven't got the expertise in the office to do that. But that comes further down the line, doesn't it? Yeah.
Well, he should be involved in the beginning of the planning applications, so he knows exactly what's coming to him. Thank you.
Anything else on that?
We'll postpone that, shall we?
Yep. I thought he was going to put his finger up there. Item 12, to consider the creation of a community engagement and events committee, and appoint members if appropriate.
Okay, if you remember, this was a proposal put forward by councillor Hobbs. He put under councillors' questions last time. So we're looking for whether you want to create a committee, or, and if so, who would like to go on it?
If we have a committee, it does take the pressure off the office doing everything. councillor Campbell-Robbs, you had your finger.
Can I propose we move this agenda item to when a full council actually has more councillors? Because what, because we can't appoint members tonight because there's, look around, there are all the empty chairs.
Well, we can, if people are interested, they can put their name forward.
But obviously, yeah.
Yeah, if people are interested, they can put their name forward. councillor Moyes.
Can I just ask, what day of the week, would it be Tuesdays again for, if the committees meet, the event?
It'll be whatever suits the diary. If we're not going to have two full councils a month.
Yeah, yeah.
That changes things slightly.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
So is there anybody here who wishes to go on to the events committee? councillor Moyes? Got councillor Hobbs, myself, that's three. Anybody else?
I think not.
It's silent, isn't it? Right, so that's an appointment.
So we're not having a community engagement committee?
No, we need another one, really.
Shall we vote on that?
Yeah, so we vote that we won't have a committee at the moment then.
Who would like to propose that?
Proposer?
Can I just, can I just second councillor Rob's proposal that we bring this back while we only have half the amount of councillors here? Seems a bit unfair, we need to vote on that.
Is that what you'd like to propose?
February last week.
Are you seconding that, councillor? Yeah. Okay, all in favour?
All in favour, aren't you?
Thank you, that's everybody. So we'll delay that until we've got a...
Yep.
Got more people present, okay.
13, to consider the provision of air conditioning or cooling method for the grand hall and agree actions.
Yeah, this was another thing that was raised at councillor's questions last time.
Just to say that I think something is needed if we're going to have hotter summers. I've been to three occasions in the last few weeks. One of them, it's 32 degrees in here, one of them, it's 30 degrees in here, and the other one, it was just stifling, so...
councillor Damon.
We do have a pagoda on the roof, which is where the extraction system dispersed to the atmosphere. It used to be an impact take position, drawing air under the stage. So it used to come from under the stage, present itself at the front of the stage, dissipate itself up into the hall, and extracted from the balcony to the pagoda. Both the systems were removed by people of earlier on occupation of the establishment of this town hall. If you're going to have air conditioning, let's have air conditioning, which means bringing in fresh air, not recycling the existing and giving it a chill. That is not air conditioning, that's just air. That's not air conditioning, that's just chill.
Can I just say, it does exacerbate it with the drapes up as well.
councillor Leavis.
I wonder if we could get some quotes for air conditioning in the immediate, when we come back for September, for the first meeting?
councillor Campbell-Robbs.
Could swamp coolers be a temporary solution, which are basically coolers which rely on water and then press air over a wet medium in order to actually make the air feel colder? Yes, they raise humidity, but they're a good temporary solution.
Are they freestanding?
Yes.
It's recycling air.
It recycles air, but they're an okay temporary solution. There's companies that will quite happily rent them for you.
I'm going to propose that we vote for the office to look into either matters of coolant into the grand hall. I propose that we've got a second to. councillor Damon, all those in favour, please?
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Item 14, to discuss corporate membership of the FLUA, FLUA, and a representative from the council. This is a gentleman from the railways that came last week. councillor Damon. Councillor Diamond.
Can I ask what the FLUA is exactly, please? It's a Fennland what?
Users Association.
Fenline Users Association.
Yeah, right. Councillor Levers.
I'm a member of FLUA, but I don't want to be obliged to go to every meeting, but I'd be quite happy when I do go to a meeting to come back if nobody else puts their name forward. But that would be not as a council member, I would be a resident.
I think some of the meetings are in Cambridge, if you remember.
Do you get a free train pass to get there? I'm sorry, I'm only going to ask.
Councillor Lewis.
Surely you do, if you go to it, you get expenses.
Oh yeah, it should do, yeah.
Only if you go as a councillor.
Yeah.
It's fine. I'd also like to say that the corporate membership is only five pounds something and the old councillors did use to have somebody representing transport. So if anybody wants to put their name forward, do so, otherwise I'll do it off the record sort of thing.
Is anybody else interested? I think by default then.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, we've discussed it, haven't we?
I'll do it as a resident, I won't be doing it as a councillor.
Fair enough.
And if I go, I'll bring a report back if I'm able to speak.
Yep, lovely, thank you. Okay, we've discussed, so we're going to item fifteen.
We didn't decide whether to go for corporate or not, that's only five pounds something.
That's not on the agenda.
Well, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
It is, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what that.
Entails?
Well, not that it entails, but what does it beholden us to? That's. Yeah, I think I would like to check.
Check it out first, okay.
I'll propose that the office check corporate membership out and if we could have a second of that then, please. Councillor Levers, all those in favour?
Yeah, thank you.
Item fifteen, to consider joining the CPRE Norfolk Anti-Mega Solar Alliance. Councillor Stephen Campbell Robb to lead on this then, please.
So I think it's, um, basically what we've done is, to me, we should be going with, as a, I am pro solar. I'm not anti-solar, but I am anti-not-using wind. We're not a very sunny country and what we've ended up with is just blanket hour fields of solar. That makes no sense at all to anyone. I mean, look at what happens in winter. Yeah.
I still get solar energy from my roof in winter.
Yeah, yeah, but not as much and it also, wind produces more energy than solar. Look, obviously there's ice throw problems.
Are you still talking or are you finished?
I'm stopped.
Right, okay, councillor Pyatt.
I hope that it's in a political group, because we're not allowed to support any political factions of any description and I've got a conceit feeling with underlying stuff happening, I believe it must be. So I can't, sorry, we can't vote. We say we can't support this at all, so there shouldn't be any discussions.
I did wonder myself when I saw.
Yeah, we shouldn't be having any discussions.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Councillor Diamond.
We already have supported the use of solar energy in the town by the farm at Denver, which transmits through the transformer station by the railway.
And all the new builds and the Wimberstone development are putting solar roof tiles on their new houses.
But I'm going to say something as well, I have solar energy, but it's purely for domestic hot water, feeding hot water, for baths, showers, washing machines, washing up and general hot water. There is no form of electrical energy used to heat water in my house apart from two thirty watt pumps and that's it.
I use mine and I also sell it on the grid. Councillor Julie Pyatt.
I, I imagine everybody's seen this in the news and these are mega solar farms. They are not just small solar panels or a small area like we've got off the A ten. We can't get involved, if it is political, to support SEPPRA, but they, they are huge. It's been on the news and it's not a good thing.
Yep, so I think the concept is that we're not interested because it may be political. Do we need a vote?
Excuse me, Mr Mayor. We're, we're an agricultural town and land is there for food to be grown on, to feed this country.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
Not for solar panels.
Do we need a vote? Yep. Yep, proposes councillor Pyatt. Second, you brought it up. You brought it up. Right, all in favour of not considering joining the alliance then, thank you.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Thank you councillor Campbell Robb for bringing up an item. Number sixteen, councillors' questions and to receive suggestions for a future agenda item. Councillor Diamond.
Is it still a standing philosophy of this council, as it was and has been for a number of years, that all children in the town, because of the surrounding water, that no child under the age of eleven shall leave the junior school without being capable of swimming twenty-five metres? Is that still standing within the town, please?
That's awesome, isn't it?
I've no idea. If it's in the national curriculum, then it will be, but I don't know if it is.
No, I'm sorry, this is something we supported in the town when Downham Market had its own swimming pool on the community playing field with the orchard is, yeah.
Yep, there will be children who can't swim, so.
Yeah, but at that time and then, and I was brought up under the same thing in a distant area, that all children under the age of eleven should be able to swim, at that time twenty-five yards. No, twenty-five yards, we're still in yards, feet and inches then. And they didn't leave school till they, or they weren't allowed to leave without being able to do that.
You can encourage swimming lessons, but I think there are always some that won't be able to.
Don't make it, yeah, I know.
Any other items people would like on the agenda? Yep, okay, item seventeen, to note the date of the next meeting for council, second of September, twenty twenty-five, seven PM in the town hall then. Thank you very much, council meeting finished, thank you.